John's on here.
Yeah, I just showed.
He said.
I have a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to all nations.
Under God.
To the justice of the law. Okay, welcome everybody. All right, the minutes, the May eighteenth meeting. Any comments? Changes?
Councilman Byington, I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Councilman Underhill, I will second.
Motion made and seconded, do we approve the be or the minutes of the, uh, or the, uh, May eight? What are you talking about, May? Where'd I get this?
That was.
I guess typo. On the February eighteenth meeting, all favor.
Lenny?
Con.
This is Councilman Shite. Um, Kim did distribute minutes from May, they were, it was an actual transcription.
Oh, I had, as, this is a typo here. Uh, is, is.
According, according to Kim, that's not a typo, it's just one that never got approved in the past.
January. The January twenty-one meeting.
Those aren't the minutes from January.
Yep. Yeah. Oh, it is right. Oh, okay. All right, let's go. Minutes of the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. These were catch-ups. All favor.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Councilman Shite, aye.
Councilman Byington, aye.
Supervisor McConnell, aye. All right, minutes approved. Financial report. This should be for January two thousand twenty-one.
Kim, did you end up sending those? I don't remember seeing those.
I printed it off today, Tone.
Yeah, I think it was a single page scanned in.
That was sent today.
Do you think they can hear you? Because I can repeat what you say.
Can you hear me or not?
Yep, I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you, I got no picture.
Yeah, I think it was yesterday.
Tony, I, I opened it, it's February sixteenth, it says no subject.
Yep, I got it now, thank you. Councilman Byington, I'll accept the financial report as presented.
Councilman Shite, I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, do we approve the financial report? Uh, for January as reported, all in favor?
Councilman Byington, aye.
Councilman Shite, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McConnell, aye. All right. Okay, the, uh, audit the bills, any discussion there?
No, I came down and went through them, Len, I didn't have any questions with them, I don't know if anyone else was able to make it or not, but from what I reviewed, I was, I was fine with it, no questions.
I had one question about, um, the one big bill that was from the water district, um, it was for, I think, the pressure valve, not so much the bill itself, but, um, just curious to know if that work was something that related to the project and could it possibly be under warranty, or is there something wrong?
No, this was an old piece of equipment.
Oh, okay, so it's not part of the new, okay.
Oh, well, we were, uh, it's been problematic for some time and it just got to the point where if it gave out, it would really be a, a major problem.
Got it, okay, that's all, you know, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, well then, I would make a motion to accept the bills as presented.
Councilman Byington, I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, that we accept or approve the bills as presented for January, all in favor?
Councilman Byington, aye.
Councilman Shite, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McConnell.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
All set? Okay. All right, let's go on to, uh, reports. John?
Yes, sir. Good to see everybody.
How are you doing?
Very good, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
As, this last month, we have plowed and sanded twenty-seven times and sanded only once. Uh, we have used the grader several times pushing back drifts and we have used a blower twice. Uh, splenas and cohocking is all out of sand at this point. Our barn is better than half full, the next best spot would be Buffalo gravel out of Alfred Station, but I don't believe we're gonna have to go that route as long as the weather don't get any worse. Uh, we have cleaned the parking spaces in front of the main street and removed a good portion of snow piles around the town and at the school this last week. Uh, repairs and maintenance, truck three oh four, we had to put in a new front rim, loader one thirteen, a new hydraulic line. Truck one oh four, we did a tranny service, the blower, uh, we had new tower steering belt, the gas line, truck three oh one, new brake line and calipers. And the grader, we put it, we bent a plow shoe, had to get a new one and had to fix a hydraulic line. Um, we had a pest inspection back in the end of December. Um, one of the violations come back that we have no workplace violence policy. Uh, we're gonna have to write one up of some kind. Um, I've talked to Dan Curtis and he is the owner of Code Three Safety, which does our yearly OSHA, um, refresher course. And he said he would put a segment in there for workplace violence, so that would be covered once a year. Um, I'd like to talk at some point about Dusty Wetmore. Uh, he's offered to be a part-time employee if we need him. Um, we have a couple issues with a couple employees down the road where we might need an extra hand. Um, it wouldn't be just to replace one guy, because we've worked with one guy short a lot. But if I have a situation where I have two guys short, I'd like to be able to call on Dusty. Um, I can't just bring him back to work because we didn't put in the budget for a part-time employee, so it'd have to go with board approval, which is what I'm asking for tonight, if the situation arises. So, that's all I have. So if you want to have a discussion on that, that would be fine.
John, that wouldn't be an issue with the union, would it?
Um, I don't believe so, because we have a space in our, uh, laws for a part-time employee already. We just didn't budget in the budget to pay the part-time employee, so.
We did a memo on that, well, back, John, this is Ed Brockman. We did a memo on part-time stuff, may I want to take a look at that again?
Okay.
Probably six months ago.
Yeah, I had, I had approached Janet about it probably a month ago and she said that the only issue would be, um, we'd have to go through board approval because we didn't budget into this year's budget, if, as far as pay goes. I don't really see an issue where it would come to fruition, we'd have to actually do it, but you never know, it'd just be a nice option to have. Because I, Stevie's gonna have surgery eventually at some point this winter. And he's gonna be out for a little bit of time and we have another employee, wife's gonna have a baby. And working with one short's not a big deal, working with two gets a little difficult. So, it's just an option, I'm looking to fill a hole there just in case.
Well, definitely needs to be taken care of, I mean, and it really, it shouldn't affect your budget too bad, because whoever's out on medical won't be getting paid for that time besides, um, through disability or something, right?
I would believe so, yes. I'm not positive on that, Tony, I can't say yes or no. I'm assuming they have to be out of disability.
I don't think it's, he's not a salaried employee, so they're hourly, right?
No, they're, well, they're all hourly, but they usually use up their sick, their PTO time is what they usually use. So they're still getting paid through the town. Because they have so many hours of sick time every year to use and so many hours of time. Usually when my guys go out, that's what they use.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but I, I almost think that we'd have to set, if we're going to appropriate money to do that, we would have to set like a, an amount, which would equate to an hourly rate and a number of hours if we're gonna do something for part-time. Or do you just appropriate as you go?
Now, you should, John cannot bring somebody in until you've already set it up. So, you need at least something, you can always extend it or renew it or expand it, but you need to have something on the books, approved by the town board before he actually hires somebody.
Would it be considered hiring somebody if they're only once or twice in a year? I mean, how, how did you, how did they do it back in the day when they had wingmen come in every day? How, how did all that work them?
Well, the one thing is, that was prior to the union.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, but it's something that I think we should look at, because it's experience. Uh, and, uh, it's a, it's a good fill for, uh, when we need a man, the best fill we could come up with.
So, John, you're only talking about, you, you're only talking about utilizing them if you need to plow, right?
Right, that's it. So I guess, in a situation if I had two guys off at the same time, and he's even offered not to be, like, work a ten-hour day, he'll come in and plow for two hours and go home, he don't care.
What, do you have an hourly rate for it, John?
When Dusty and I talked to one another, he asked me what we were paying Matt Pollack to work with Fred, and I said, I believe it's sixteen sixty-one, he said, that's fine with me. He said, I don't need to get my old wages or anything, so.
Motion to approve you hiring a part-time at sixteen sixty-one an hour with maximum hour per week or something would be sufficient.
What you're saying, Ed, is make it a, a motion to have him for a total of up to fifty hours at sixteen sixty-one and you can't go over that? Something along those lines?
Yes.
I would be fine with that, fifty hours would be like a week's worth of work and if you spread it out over four-hour shifts, that would be more than sufficient.
Well, you could say a maximum per week, John, or even a month, because weeks may not be all the same.
Well, it's really up to the board what they're, willing to approve, but I wouldn't think we need more than fifty hours, most.
For the total, for the total part-time, or for you talking about per week?
For the total part-time, I can't imagine we'd have more than two guys out for any length of time.
That'd be all right. And then if you approach that fifty hours, you get up to forty or something, then come back to the board at a meeting and say, can we extend this or expand it?
All right, very well. The board will have to break the move.
I'll make a motion to, John can bring in a part-time help at sixteen sixty-one an hour, not to exceed fifty hours for part-time help, uh, in case he's, they've got multiple, multiple employees out at the same time.
Just Councilman Underhill, I will second.
The motion made, seconded, we, uh, have, uh, a part-time employee come in, up to fifty hours total to help the highway when they have mo- uh, multiple employees off. Uh, all in favor?
Councilwoman Einwachter, aye.
Councilman Shite, aye.
Councilman Byington, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McConnell, aye, passed.
Thank you. This is Brockman again, would anyone object if I sent to John and the board that memo we did about six months ago? Because I just don't want to see us get into a bind all of a sudden.
No, that'd be fine.
Nice to look it over and then decide whether or not we're okay, or we can ask questions. But I'd rather have us look at it than be sorry after the fact. But I got no problem with what you did tonight.
All right, yeah, I'm happy to look it over.
Okay, I'll send it out.
Anybody have anything else, questions?
Yes, Councilwoman Einwachter, um, John, I remember working with Chris on the violence in the workplace policy and I can look through my, uh, files from last term and see what, uh, some of the issues were then, I mean, obviously some things might have changed, but there might be some relevant information and, um, some of it might have already been drafted.
So far, I have not met with Chris Hastings face-to-face. Um, at the time that he did the pest inspection, I was only getting prepped for surgery, so I didn't get to see him.
No, 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 Chris Jensen.
Yeah, I'm talking, the guy that I'm dealing with, that's Chris Hastings.
Okay, okay.
I have to, there might be a workplace violence policy up there in, in our logbook, I haven't looked yet, but we have no, there's gotta be a policy written down, it's gotta be posted on the wall, and there's gotta be, with a contact if somebody has an issue. So we just have to, you know, and there's gonna be more violations down the road, that was the most serious one, the way they made it sound. And they're gonna get back with me with whatever else around the barn needs to be attended to, so. So I, they covered half of, like I said, with Dan Curtis, if he covers that during the OSHA refresher, that gets away our once-a-year, uh, talk about what was going on with harassment and violence. Alrighty, anything else?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Well, bear with me here, I, uh, I read this, uh, wind law over three or four times. And, uh, after reviewing it, uh, I, I, I questioned whether that's the real intent of this board, some of the, the language in that. The, the document is, uh, not, uh, I don't think it represents, uh, our needs, uh, completely. Uh, the board's responsibility is to all residents, landowners, uh, and, and, uh, we have to have the ability to, uh, fund our needs at the town level, highway, uh, all the, uh, expenses that we have. And with what's going on with the COVID, uh, we're losing a, a good, big chunk of sales tax. We're losing, uh, several highway programs are either being cut or they're, they're being taken out completely. Uh, it's, it's, uh, we're gonna be at a, a, a place here that, uh, we're not gonna be able to keep under the, the cap, not by any means, I, it, even next year, I think, we're gonna be close. Uh, it's, it's, uh, something that, uh, you know, we all gotta think about, hard and strong, uh. The property taxes, I would hate to see them go up, but that's, that's a good possibility, a real possib- a possibility.
So Len, what, what specific, what specific are you having heartburn with?
What's that? Well, let me finish, let me finish. I'm gonna read this. Now.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna get you all that, so I'll see you later.
What? Go. But the, uh, the, a lot of the, uh, our government programs are, are gonna be cut, uh, federal and state and county. And the folks that, uh, are against this, uh, wind project, uh, I haven't had to talk to one that's got a, a good answer, where are these, this money's gonna come from. Uh, I, I get awful, awful tired of hearing that we're not against it when, when they are. Uh, we're in big need of a town barn. Uh, you know, with the water district, uh, is, and Fred will talk about that, but, uh, the water district is, is, we've got some more lines in trouble, we've got not to, this was response to that, but we can, we can use some of this revenue in a way to help with that. Uh, the town barn. Uh, we've got, uh, a grader needs replacing, a loader that needs replacing. Uh, the old snow blower is, is finally bit the, bit the dust, not that we're gonna replace it. But it's, it's, this is all coming, coming here and coming quickly. Uh, I go back to, uh, Global Winds, which I've been involved in this for thirteen, fourteen years, in one way or another. And because of the resistance to that, the group left town. Uh, millions of dollars were lost, uh, along with, uh, a premise town barn and other benefits. Uh, the second de- uh, developer was taken to court by the town, the town lost, we had, uh, uh, bills of lawyers and fees for, I, I think, assessed one hundred and twenty to five thousand. Uh, the, the, the board at that time tried successfully, they wanted to lay off a highway employee to help pay for this. That didn't work because they had a, a lot of resistance to that. But they took away the twenty thousand dollars a year that we were putting aside to finance a new town barn. This, folks, we gotta, this, we gotta stop and think about this. You may have your, your thoughts, your, your, about, uh, wind power and all that, but we gotta come to the table and we gotta talk sense and we gotta keep in mind the problems we're gonna have coming down the road. It's, uh, it's, it's, uh, it scares me, what, what's gonna happen here? The, uh, there'll be jobs created, revenue, uh, local assistance, road improvement. And the, the, the farmers and landowners, the farmers especially, need these revenues. Uh, that's about it. I've got more spiel than I could do, but I'm not gonna. That's it.
The, the, the one thing I, I, I will just add to that portion of the conversation, Len, is, um, seeing Kathy's response, uh, Labella's response, and, and it's not that it's all new, um, it certainly wasn't all new, but, um, gave me pause just a, a little bit, um, with regards to, you know, our local law, especially under ninety-four C, just being perceived, and I've, I've said it before with regards to the sound piece anyway, um, that if it just gets thrown away, then it's, in, in essence, it's, it was unreasonably burdensome, I, I, I'm afraid that, um, that it's gonna get pushed down our throats regardless, um, we may have more of a say to protecting folks if we are able to, uh, come back with something more stringent, but the, the, the state will consider, um. Like I said, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that for now, um. I, I, I think that, um, we probably need to consider it anyway, so.
Um, this is Councilman Shite. Lenny, I agree with much of what you said in regards to challenges the town is going to face. But I have looked hard at the revenue that would potentially come in from a wind project. And in terms of the pilot, it will not help the town at all in terms of paying its bills. It will provide some tax relief to citizens, but it's really minimal. I mean, we're talking forty dollars on a fifty-four thousand dollar assessment. Um, so in terms of the town being able to pay its bills, the bill is not the answer. Um, you can make an argument that maybe through a host community agreement, something could be done for the barn, uh, for the highway barn. But quite honestly, I, I've tried to work with John over the last couple of weeks, um, in getting set up to pursue some grants for that. Um, so there, there are alternatives, um. I, you know.
Grants for a number of years trying to get a time, through the time, a town highway barn. And still looking. And as far as a tax relief, no, I don't believe the money should go to tax relief, it should go to infrastructure.
Len, Lenny, we don't have a choice. The, the tax law under New York State, under the pilot, lowers our levy by the exact amount of the pilot. So we, we have no choice but to lower our tax levy if we accept the pilot. That's the law.
All right.
I couldn't believe it when I saw it either.
Not official.
This is Councilwoman Einwachter, um, I understand what you're saying, Lenny. But it's disconcerting to me that we've gone through this wind law ad nauseam and now all of a sudden it's problematic when we all sat around a table discussing it and agreeing to the terms, so I don't know, I mean, it would have been helpful if this would have been brought up at the time of the actual discussion, because now it's going to throw us behind even more. And considering the fact that we can't meet in person or we're not meeting in person, um, it's no problematic, I think.
It's, uh, it's no good the way it is, far as I'm concerned.
But you were sitting at the table the entire time.
And I had questions in some of those questions, I've gone back to my notes and some of those questions weren't answered and have them taken care of, and you know that our discussions go round and round and round and round. And at the end of the day, who knows what we, what, what the, I, I, you know, I just, I'm getting tired of this circus.
Well, who is supposed to answer your questions?
We come, we talked to people, talked, if we talked to other towns, if we talked to other people involved in this, has anybody talked to other towns? Has anybody called Kathy and talked to her other me? Does anybody?
This is Brockman again, I will say that I sent this up to, uh, Kathy Spencer to look over and I talked to her at the end of last week and as I mentioned to Len and the wind tonight, she told me that this is the most restrictive wind loss she's ever seen. And she thought a lot of it, a lot of the provisions, we'd have to go through each one with her, but she said a lot of them would be set aside as unreasonably burdensome. Back to something that, uh, Kevin told us at one point, and this was like a couple of months ago. He said he could not live with the sound setback that existed previously. And that's why basically they cut us back to three towers in Prattsburg. Certainly any one of these sections can be deleted or modified to whatever we think is appropriate. This has not been sent to Kevin or any of his attorneys or anybody representing, uh, Prattsburg Wind. We discussed that last month and we decided not to send it to him at this point. But certainly we can go through it and whatever the board wants to do, we can do. A lot of it was based on things that Kathy Spencer initially, uh, recommended. I'm not criticizing her by any means, but, uh, a lot of it was memo to us. Some of it, a lot of it, we added later. A good portion of it, we added later.
Well, with using, a couple of these things, it's, I'm quite sure that, uh, we're gonna have a lot more than three towers.
Board's decision to try to get more towers back, then I guess the best thing to do would be to talk to, uh, Kevin and his people. I don't, I don't think it's the best idea to have it look like the town board is doing whatever Kevin wants, but that would be the next step.
Yeah, this is Councilman Shide. If, if, if at this point in the project Kevin is still able to move turbines, then there are bigger issues with this project than anything that our town board has done.
Well, that's what I got.
This is Councilwoman Einwachter. I'm certainly willing to look at it again, but not via Zoom or virtual. We have to meet in person for this because this is too important.
Absolutely. Let's set something up. I have a special meeting.
I think that's best with, from my perspective too. Special meeting and, um, just looking at a calendar quick, but maybe in, uh, late in the first week of March.
Like the fourth? Thursday, the fourth?
Sorry, Ed, I'm still pulling my calendar up.
No.
Yeah. It seems like Thursdays are typically Mondays or Thursdays, but.
Monday, March first or Thursday, March fourth? We may end up having more than one special meeting. If we're gonna move the past on this.
The fourth would work best for me.
Fourth, I think, works for me too. Yes.
Pete, how about Pete?
Yeah, um, I can make the fourth. That's a Thursday.
Angela?
Yes, I can make it.
Tony gone?
Yeah.
You got mad.
Kevin, can you contact Tony? Then we'll contact Tony.
All right.
So we're gonna do it the fourth, six thirty.
Six thirty.
So. Be a special meeting. In per- we're gonna do it in person, right, folks?
Yes.
Correct.
Can you do the notice? Friggin' distance.
And.
That means it, are we gonna, you might have a crowd here then? If the word gets around.
Yeah, have only so many.
We'll, we'll go back to that mechanism we used before where people can go up, follow ahead or whatever, and only a certain number can get in. We'll use that. You still got that format, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Kim's gonna take care of the notice, posting and publishing.
Good. Did you get a chance, Fred? Hey, Fred? You awake?
You're unmuted.
You're unmuted, right?
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Uh, report?
Yeah, I jumped ahead of you.
Yeah, that's all right. Um, for the code side, I did a couple building inspections, four subject inspections, a couple of FPOs. Um, and, uh, same with John following the sand and quite, or shoveling quite a bit. And on the water side, um, I'm still mucking with that valve that broke there a month or so ago, that two inch one. We can't seem to get that to stop leaking. I just got some new flanges in today. So we're gonna try to see if we can get that thing to quit leaking. Um, did the monthly water report, monthly water sample. Shovel ground all the hydrants there last Friday. Um, they had a main break Monday um, between seventy and seventy-two North Main Street. And that's the third break on that line less a year, less than a year. Um, so that thing's gonna start being more of an issue, I guess. I think we've got, Russ and I counted what we can remember. We got at least ten repairs on that line. Um, so. Um, and the last two days I've gotten notice of rate increases on our, hypochlorite, that's going up. Can't give you the exact amount, but. And for the chlorine and the delivery fee and also from Badger on meters and meter part going up three, three to five percent, something like that. Um, working on getting quotes. I think I've got one more quote to get for the meters. And when I get that, John, if you and I can get together and look them over. Um, Len and I talked today. Um, I had a pretty good conversation with the guy from Badger today and, um, told him what our concerns were about availability and all that and I just, you know, Len and I talked and, I mean, for cost wise, obviously Badger's way ahead of everybody else because we've already got the, the system in. All we gotta do is get from them is the upgrade in the reading system, which, um, if this laptop still does what it's supposed to do, then we're looking at around sixteen thousand dollars versus the other two or three quotes are anywhere from sixty-six to ninety thousand. Okay, so obviously, you know, if we can make Badger work and be assured that we're gonna get the, the parts that we need when we got them or need them, then obviously that's gonna be the way to go, but, um, so, and he assured me, obviously, you know, he's not gonna tell me any different, that, that shouldn't be a problem, but.
Do you have something on paper from him or an email, Fred, from Badger? Do you have something on paper or email or something from Badger?
I do, and that's, that's another reason I reached out to him again because that quote's old.
Yeah.
And, uh, so he's gonna try to get me. He didn't know if he could get it to me by tomorrow, but at least first part of the week with an updated, um, quote, so. But I, I've got all those quotes in a folder, so if you want to, I can meet up with you and you can drop them off. You can look at them or whatever. Uh, if you want me to do that tomorrow, I can.
That's fine if you have something, yeah?
Yeah. You know, and then, then I'll just let you know when I get the updated quote from Badger. Um, okay?
Yep.
Um, and reaching out to Maple City Dodge and, uh, Simmons Rockwell on the truck. Um, I'm kinda getting the same vibes from both the guys. I had a pretty good talk with AJ from Simmons Rockwell and Larry Gardner from Maple City today too, and, um, it looks like, you know, we, we've discussed it, you know, a little bit with a three-quarter ton, but the one ton probably would be the difference, AJ figured it out real quick, is hardly even noticeable as far as cost between the two. Uh, he said a few hundred bucks, less than a thousand. Um, and with that box, if we're even able to keep it and put it down in the new truck, obviously, um, but then again, we discussed that too, and it may be even, um, cost effective just to sell the truck and back and put, you know, buy a new box, because I got a verbal from the guy from Keatsworth. Nothing on paper yet, but, um, with the box, right now he's saying that truck could go between thirty and thirty-five thousand. Okay, so, um, if that's the case, then, you know, we'd be basically buying another truck for almost nothing. Um, according to AJ. And he, you know, we discussed trade in, we discussed the different options, and but AJ said, he says, if you can get thirty to thirty-five out of that truck, he says, do it, you know, um, that'll be the way to go. Um, so, but I haven't gotten any quotes from either guy yet. We've just been chatting on the phone. They're getting stuff around. They've, they've got all the specs from this truck and, uh, they're gonna work something out for me. So. All right?
That's it.
Dave Redd. Any comments?
Nope.
Good.
All right, uh, anybody out there? Got a message from the floor?
Yep. Hi, this is Gary. Um, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, it's three minutes.
Okay. Uh, I'm on Ringrose and our family's been up there about twenty-five years and, um, I just wanted to get a word in. Uh, most of you are probably aware, we're, we support the, the wind project and, um, we've been involved and, and working on it in our situation for eighteen months, and I'm anxious for the town to town and town board to bring their part of it to the table and wrap it up. Uh, I've had lawyers involved and, and whatnot, and we did this fair amount of work. And, um, this is a serious opportunity. I agree with a lot of Len's comments. Um, we think it's great for the town and, and we're very happy with, with all the work that Prattsburg provides us and its services and no complaints. I, I, I guess I'm just disappointed that it's taken so long to get this law honed in and, and passed so we can have a serious crack at this project. As you know, they abruptly changed the scope on the northern part of Prattsburg. And, uh, Mr. Shide, I'm sorry, I don't know your first name, but there still is time to move make, make changes and put things back the way they were eighteen months ago when I started in on this adventure. And I urged the board, you know, a lot of us support it, and then you've got a lot of people that are silent and, and support it. Please don't cater to the vocals that are objecting. I, I urge you to consider all your constituents. And, um, with that, I'll bring it to close and I, I will see you on March fourth. It sounds like it's gonna be open to the public and, uh, I'll bring my mask and I'll be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else out there? Floor's open. Okay. We're close the, uh, the, uh, privilege of the floor. It's old business.
No, I'll wait.
The justice court resolution.
Angela, have we, uh,
We have not.
Our due diligence?
No, we have not. We'll have to do that for next month. I have her phone number. I will call her tomorrow. I've just been sort of backlog down other things. But I promise to call her tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks. Then you can either just text me or email me or whatever you want, Angela.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. I'm sorry. I dropped off.
Lenny, did Alice wanna talk? She raised her hand.
Who?
Um, Alice? Alice, are you there? Did you wanna talk?
Well, I, since the situation with Texas and the ice, I noticed as we're going through, you don't have really ice detection and ice heating of the blades, so it doesn't form ice in the law. Did you hear me or?
Yes, we, we can hear you. Uh, and what, what I would offer is that that absolutely can be something we discuss at the special meeting. If there's some kind of inclusion for, for that, if, if necessary.
Because we're gonna be the ones locally who won't have any electricity. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else out there?
Yeah, this is Gary Zink again. I, I don't think that's necessarily true. I don't know, I don't know Alice, but, uh, I don't think that's available.
Well, we can't get into a back and forth here. Uh, we gotta, if there's others, we gotta share the time here. Anybody else? Okay, I gotta, I gotta close this. Um, now I'm doing, uh, the landfill solar project. Ed, you've had some correspondence?
Correct. Uh, there's two or three different aspects to this. First of all, um, we're going to look into whether anyone else was interested in making a proposal for the timber. So I guess I'd ask whether or not we had anyone interested in it. Uh, we, well, Hockton has somebody that's interested and wants to go forward with it. But we put him on hold in case we had somebody else interested. I know there was a comment that maybe Ellen Burke would wanna get involved in it.
Yeah, he seems interested.
Can you talk to him?
Yeah.
You need to, if we're gonna do it this year, we need to get going because prime time is right now to be up there in the woods.
Yeah. I talked to him, uh, a week ago, uh, spent the second time and, uh, I, I think probably he's been up there, but he, you know, because of the snow and that, uh, he was hoping the snow would, would at least go down some so he could go in there and, uh, see the markings and you know, figure his, uh, do his figuring, but, uh, I have talked to him and he is interested.
So you want me to let, uh, Judy Hall know we're still holding off?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
I'll tell him. He's gotta get on the horse if he's gonna do it. That's all there is to it.
Yeah, because it's not gonna be fun to be, uh, skidding logs out of there if there's, uh, four inch mud underground, plus it'll damage the woods. But anyway, uh, second thing is, uh, I tried getting ahold of the county attorney. Had, um, no luck getting ahold of her. She did try calling me back once, but we didn't make contact. So I sent a letter. Um, no luck getting ahold of her. She did try calling me back once, but we didn't make contact, so I sent a letter. Well, just over a week ago, I think a few folks might have been copied in on it. And I'm waiting to hear back from her, but in the meantime, right after I sent that letter. I had contact from a gentleman from Toronto. Van Dorm, I believe his name is, and he was representing. A solar company and, uh, wanted to talk to me, so I talked with him for about fifteen minutes. And, uh, told him what the status was, told him we had heard nothing back from the county since August. With regards to, uh, the solar project. And he said, well, he had talked to the county and the county said they were waiting for us, which I find that hard to believe after. Angela and I left that meeting, they were going to get ahold of us. Uh, and that's been six months now anyways, but in any event, I told him that, uh. Certainly, we're more than happy to talk to him. Uh, I told him that my recollection was that the town board was not in support of clear cutting the back. Uh, fifteen or so acres, uh, but that we've got no problem with the front part. And he was also told by the county that we were going to, uh, cancel the lease, which is not true. We talked about the possibility of it, but we never told the county we were going to do that. So in any event, uh, I told him that he should get ahold of the, uh, the town. And he has Kim's number. I thought maybe he'd try to get ahold of. Kim to set it up for tonight, but, uh, Kim's had no contact with him, so maybe next month.
I, well, I talked to him.
Yes, he he told you that, he told me that he talked to you, Len, and that you actually told him to give me a buzz.
Yeah, I should have given the old heads up on it, but I.
Okay.
I, you know, I I know it was in the works, and I thought, well.
That's fine.
Get in the middle of it.
That's fine, but, uh. I've had a little experience with solar and, uh. In order to be viable, they've got to have four or five megawatt production out of a site. To justify it, and it takes about eight acres for one megawatt. So at the most, you're gonna, unless they start cutting down trees up there and clear clearing out land. Uh, you're talking about maybe two megawatts up there, so. He may not even get ahold of us again, I don't know, but I told him we're more than happy to talk about any aspect to that. Because certainly it would be beneficial to the town, both towns. So we'll wait and see if we hear.
This is Councilwoman Einwachter. We heard from the other solar firm directly.
I'm not sure if this was the same one, Angela, or not.
Yeah, it's the same one. It's a different, uh, the gal that was. Uh, that worked for him prior to this has left and gone with another company. And this fellow's taking their spot.
Okay, so this is the same company?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Now, he seemed to be. Under, working under false premises somehow because. He said that the power lines up there needed to be upgraded, but Len and I both know, because we've been up there and so many other ones. Other folks may also have been up there. There are no power lines along there.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what he's talking about there.
No, it's, uh, I think, what did I say, four tenths of a mile to the closest power line.
Right, yeah, it's good, almost a hat.
Any of those people actually visited the site to know what they would be building on?
I don't believe the gentleman I talked to, but. And I doubt if the young lady that we talked to had been there. And when you and I met with the county, Angelo, they sounded like they didn't know anything about the site either.
Right.
Because whether they were faking it or not, they acted like they had no idea that it required clear cutting of. Fifteen acres of mature timber.
Mm-hmm, right.
Keep in mind that, uh, the fellow who scaled that for Kohocton. Marked maybe somewhat over a hundred trees. There's probably three or four times that number, particularly of red oak and black oak. That will be. Harvestable in the next ten year, next twenty years, next thirty years. That ground could keep producing timber for perpetually, for that matter. Particularly. There's a few other species like, uh, wild cherry up there and some maple, but most of it's beautiful red oak or black oak.
It's a, it's a nice spot back there.
Beautiful, Len. It's a beautiful wood.
So that's, we're kind of in neutral there then, Wade Springs County.
I've got, I've got his email. I think you do too, Len, if you want to invite him to a meeting. Whether he comes personally or remotely.
Yeah, I said, I'd like to talk to him, uh, about the project, but.
Yeah, we don't want to close the door on it.
Oh.
But the board, if they can't do it without cutting some woods, then the board's gonna have to decide whether they want to do that or not, and of course. We've only got a three-eighth interest in the property. Kohocton's got five eggs.
Yeah. Any or I don't know.
But it was a good conversation and we. We got along pretty well, so I hope that they contact us at least to talk over it.
Uh. Oh, go ahead. Is he from Canada himself or is the company, is he a rep in the States or is he in Canada?
He had a cellphone from the Toronto area, though.
Oh, okay, because he may not be able to come down at this. Point.
Well, he, he indicated that he would like to meet.
Well, I mean, I don't know that he can get across the border right now with the restrictions.
Yeah, that's true.
But hopefully soon.
That's true.
Uh, Len, if we got a couple of minutes, I'd like to review a couple of other things that I had have. Your old business. Uh, we covered the landfill. Uh, the courts are opening up again. And starting in March, uh, before the court shut down again, uh. We were working on some code violations. Um. So perhaps we can start those up again. We put a lot of time in on it and I don't want to let them drop by the wayside. There were at least a dozen of them. So, uh. I'll get back with Fred and start working on those again. Uh, Len and I had a phone conference with J C Smith regarding the sewer. And in order to, uh, move the thing along, we're going to be working on the lease slash easement with the church for the. Uh, leach field over here. Um. J C thought it would be helpful if he showed some some sort of progress, and he's still working on. Funding, he's hoping there's more availability coming in the near future. Uh, Stuben Foods, we, uh, sent a letter out to Stuben. Uh, regarding agreeing with their plan and, uh, I had talked to, uh, Jen. Perry about that, and we're just waiting for a response at this point. Basically, I told them. That, uh, they're good with their plan and to let us know so that we could, uh. Coordinate putting the new culvert in under. Fairgrounds Road. I also reiterated we're not paying for any of it. Uh, M and T Bank, they sent us a stipulation settlement. I signed it and sent it back, so that matter should be essentially over with. That's it. Thank you.
Well, Ed, one more thing now.
Yep.
With this, uh, the problems we're having on North Main Street. Uh, was the the main breaks in the, uh. The storm sears were, uh, being placed. Uh, illegally above it. Uh, I, I mean, we're gonna have to redo this, this, this whole street. That's, this is, uh. And this is, we've got, we're dealing with storm sewer and and the gas company, both every time we dig. Uh, I I I don't know if we can. If if the, if the county should be, uh, responsible for some. Uh, some process happened to move this. I just, it's, it's, the state created this problem when they turned it over to county. They rebuild all that.
Right.
But the county and and how they got away with that, I don't know.
I have no idea other than the fact that it happened probably at a time when things weren't. Handled as technically as they are.
It was sixty-eight, I think, in there someplace.
Yeah, well, that's. That's in another lifetime, actually. But. We can do it any way you want to. I would like to do it through negotiations rather than litigation.
Yeah, well, yeah, they, I mean, they do send, uh, personnel out every time we have a break. They backfill it, tamp it. After we've, I say we, after Fred and and Russ and them fix a break, then they they backfill, bring the material. And tamp it, so we get, and then and then a responsible course for patching the road. But, which is.
I think, I think, Len, you and I, you and I and, uh. Fred ought to sit down and talk about that sometime.
Yeah, all right.
Come up with a plan on how to approach it.
Because this is, uh, this is, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna just continue to have problems.
Right. I'll get ahold of everyone.
Okay, anything else on old business? Regarding, uh. Well, we got the wind law.
I would suggest we hold off on all this stuff until that special meeting.
All right. Is that agreeable?
Well, makes no sense to do it.
No, we may have to do it all over again if we change the law.
I agree.
Can I, can I also respectfully suggest that when we have that meeting on the fourth, that, uh. Any? Recommendations to amendments be. Available at night, so we can discuss them.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. Good, we can write them any way you want. We can delete whatever you want. It's totally up to the town board how we decide to move forward on that.
Can, can this Councilman Shai, can I also respectfully request that? That we leave that meeting, hopefully, in agreement as to what the economic impact will be. Um, because there doesn't seem to be a general understanding of of the tax law. So I would like to at least hash that out.
Well, that would certainly seem to be part of the equation. As to what's going on or what direction the town board wants to go in.
The only thing we wouldn't understand is host community agreement, if 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 any.
Correct, and I think if if the if any is the key word, I think we have to deal with with guarantees.
Pete, that law that you're referencing, could you let me know with it?
I I put the link in the chat section of of this meeting, so anyone can go to the site and look at it. It's pretty straightforward. You you back out the amount of pilot. Yeah, you you back out the amount of the pilot in year one, and then in year two. You you add it in, but but each year you subtract it out and add it in, subtract it out and add it in. So the net gain to the town is is zero. Um, and we and we're hurt even further because the tax cap increase is based on your levy. Not your revenue, so when we shrink that tax levy. The future increases allowed by the tax cap law in dollar terms are smaller than they would be otherwise. So you you've heard Kevin Sheen throughout various meetings mention that they would adjust the pilot. Because of that, but again, there are no guarantees. A, that Teragen would do it, and B, that Teragen would even be in position to do it three years out. The project might be owned by someone else.
Right, right. No, I can't, I can't get the chat, so. I, I just wanted to see what law you were referencing.
Yeah, I'll send it. It's just the New York State tax formula. It's not not lost formula, but I can send.
The one thing I I I'm gonna add again, Pete, is that. In fairness, you know, when you talk about only guarantees, we haven't even gone with a final law. To Kevin yet, so any kind of stipulations from a host community agreement perspective. Are never going to be guaranteed until we have a final law. I I I mean, it's a chicken or the egg thing. It it kind of goes. Round and round. There isn't necessarily ever going to be a benefit to the town from, um, a direct. Uh, payment to buying a barn instead of money. That, you know, from a pilot perspective, using that money to turn around and pay for. A barn. I I don't know, I I guess.
Yeah, John, I I understand where you're coming from with the chicken and the egg thing, but we know that that allegedly. Kevin has put the cap of total compensation of the project at eighty-five hundred dollars per megawatt, and he broke that down further. I think it was, I don't have my notes in front of me, five thousand for pilot and thirty-five hundred for. Community host agreement, um, and that's not locked in stone either, so. We already know we're not dealing with a lot of money, and we're most definitely dealing with a different arrangement than I understood. When Kevin first spoke to us.
Uh, so I think that there's a couple of steps there, and and and. I don't mean to to belabor too much, but I think that we. The comment back that this is one of the most restrictive laws that Kathy's seen, um. Is is again what kind of gave me pause to want to go back and relook and make sure this is what we want. Before we. Put that final nail in the coffin, say this is the final law, and we are at a total of three windmills and that's going to be it, or zero, or. Um, that, if there is a benefit to be had, we have to fully be able to understand what that benefit is or what the opportunity cost lost is. And 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 there may be more of an opportunity cost than what we're considering right now. By saying, okay, we're just gonna go ahead and pass the law and. Potentially negate. A benefit to the town that is unseen right now or unknown, and I'm not saying that we have to go through and and pass a law. That is just easy in orders that we might get a little bit of something or something that is of no benefit. If there truly is no benefit, but we don't know what that is until we approach the wind company. And we have to approach them with a law that, in my perspective, if a, the most restrictive law that Kathy. Has seen is. Gonna negate us from having any kind of benefit. I I don't know, it it just. Makes sense that we. Come to a sense of finality that this is exactly what we need to do. Um, you know, considering all benefits to landowners, you know, on both sides of the coin.
Yeah, John, I, yeah, I'm I'm open to talking about it, certainly in in March, and and I certainly would like some finality. We're. We're now in excess of two years in dealing with this, and and we don't even have a project map. In terms of my resources being dedicated to this, doing my homework and studying tax formulas and everything else. I find it ridiculous that two years in, we don't even have a total project map. I mean, it's really, it's it's dragging on. Um, I I may be like Tony and probably like Lenny too. I think we're all a little, we're growing tired, you know?
Yeah, I'm not advocating for either changing or leaving it the way it is, but keep in mind that. At the last meeting. Kevin said they're seriously thinking about deleting two more towers out of the whole project, so. Um, who knows where those will be deleted from if in fact they do it, and you don't, you never know what, whether Kevin's BSing or. Giving the straight scoop. I know he's a smooth talker. He's a lot better than the ones I dealt with before on the other projects. But he's got a job to do, and his job is not necessarily benefiting the people of the towns. Certainly, there's benefit. Certainly there's benefits to the property owners that are running to them. And you have to question whether it's even worthwhile having three towers. Cause I don't see us getting much money out of it. It's hardly even worth it. But uh, whatever way the town board wants to go in terms of wording this law, we can work it out whatever you want.
Very good. Well, let's uh, let's move on to new business. Intermissal, intermunicipal agreement.
Then could I just comment on that, Len?
Yeah.
That's an agreement the county sent and uh, Tim just got it recently. I glanced at it. What it has to do with is that most of the counties are doing traffic ticket diversion programs. So if you get a speeding ticket instead of going to court, it goes to a, through the DA's office and they settle it outside of court. It produces more revenue for the towns than the, the straight traffic tickets do. Most of that money goes to the state and never comes back. But I need to look it over a deep, and Kim just is gonna give me a copy to move. And uh, I don't believe there's any problem with waiting till at least the March fourth meeting. If that's in line with you folks.
Mm-hmm.
I looked it over. I don't, I don't, I wanted you to look at it, cause uh.
Thank you.
That's, it's kinda Greek to me. Uh, reappointing Dave Peck to the Board of Assessment Review. He served one term. He's a uh, contractor, worked at it all his life. So he's, he's uh, certainly got the uh, background.
Is Dave interested in being reappointed?
Yeah.
I take it he is. I don't, Kim must talk to him. I haven't.
Yes.
Kim said he is interested in staying there.
Okay, good.
Any discussion?
Councilwoman Einwachter, I'd make a motion to reappoint Dave Peck to the Board of Assessment Review.
Very second.
Councilman Shai, I'll second the motion.
Motion made, seconded that we reappoint Dave Peck to the Board of Assessment Review. All favor.
Councilwoman Einwachter, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Underhill, I abstain. He's a relative.
And Supervisor McConnell, aye. That carried. Uh, violence in the workplace policy that John has touched on. I don't, is there any more discussion on that?
John, were you going to get with your contact Chris there to find out more information? Oh, John Perry, are you there?
He's on mute. Hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I pushed the right button. It's amazing. So, yeah, Dan is gonna do the refresher course when he does the OSHA and cover that. But what we need is a physical policy and we'll have to check and see if we have one on the books. If not, we're gonna have to write one up. That's basically what it boils down to.
Okay.
Nobody, nobody has to write one up, John. They're you just rubber stamp somebody else's.
Oh, just like that.
Have we not done one in the past that?
Don't tell anybody I said that, John.
I didn't hear a thing.
Okay, good.
Go ahead, Johnny.
Ed, do you, do you remember? Do we, did we have one of this? It seems like this has come up before.
I'm pretty sure that we have one. We don't wanna have, we need to have it in the handbook. And keep in mind, if you uh, have someone come on as an employee during the year, like your guy that may come on part-time, you gotta do it with them when they come on.
Yeah, the same with sexual harassment and all those different courses anymore.
Yeah, Kim says you have the sexual harassment, but not the work. I thought, I thought Chris would be uh, workplace violence.
We went round and round, but I don't recall if it ever got approved because I remember it was a sore subject with him that we never actually finalized anything. But I need to look back and note.
I will dig around and see what I can find in the books on, on the shelf and I will let you know on that March third meeting.
I, I didn't look at the, in my stuff. I only looked in the, in the book.
Well, it would have had to been adopted at a board meeting. Kim's going to look through the minutes and see if it was ever adopted previously. I, I know we worked on it, but in the edging, we just let it go.
I think it was. I think it was.
Thinking of something else, Ed, but I almost thought we had to have one for one of the grants that we got. That there had to be something on the books. There was so, a different driver, but we had to have the policy. So, but maybe it was a different policy that we had to do for one of the grants.
Alright.
I'm pretty sure it's there.
Angelo, you said that we worked on it at one point. You remember that?
Back when I was on the board, I was working with Chris on it. And so I have files upstairs on it, but um, I know it was an ongoing discussion, not, never able to really come to a consensus, but that could have changed. I mean, it might have been passed after I left.
I don't remember. I'd have to go back through files. Best way is for Kim to check the minutes. Cause it had to be adopted at a board meeting.
Right.
It would be in the minutes. And if, if we don't find one by the fourth, do you do it by the fourth, do you think?
Oh, tonight or tomorrow?
We don't have one by the fourth, then we should start adopting one. It's required by the state.
Mm-hmm.
Should it be a slam dunk at this point?
I know.
Yeah, it doesn't take a lot of negotiation. It's pretty much boilerplate stuff.
Alright, very good.
Say anything else?
Nope.
Where you sat?
Councilwoman Einwachter, make a motion to adjourn.
Councilman Underhill, I will second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the uh, meeting, the February meeting. Uh, and uh, we will have a special meeting coming up. What do we say? The fourth of March?
Fourth of March at six thirty, right?
At six thirty, okay. Everybody's favor?
Councilwoman Einwachter, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Underhill, aye.
Supervisor McConnell, aye. Carrie. A good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Alright, everybody, travel safe.